Hi Caitlin.
Hello.
Hi Caitlin.
Hello. Can everybody hear me okay over Zoom?
Loud and clear.
Great. Thanks for setting everything up Jen. Let's see, is it okay? Okay, everyone else is in person. Can everybody hear me okay over Zoom?
Sounds good.
Loud and clear.
Great. Thanks for setting everything up Jen. See, is it okay? Okay, everyone else is in person. Can everybody hear me okay over Zoom?
Sounds good.
Loud and clear.
Great. Thanks for setting.
Sorry about that. We're, we are starting a YouTube livestream instead of our old system and I think my audio was on and I didn't realize that that was going to create this perpetual loop of everything.
That was an impressively delayed loop.
So the clerks told me that there is a delay in the livestream, but they didn't mention that I needed to mute it or we'd be in an endless loop.
All right. I'd like to call the April 5th, 2023 Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting to Order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Right. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Oh Caitlin, can we call the roll?
Oh yeah, yep, please call the roll.
Anderson and Burton both have excused absences. Smith, McAiley.
Here.
Barbaza.
Here.
Murray.
Here.
Topfest.
Here.
Chair Badla.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Now, are there any changes to the agenda? Any objections to approving the agenda? Here none, the agenda is approved. Any changes to the minutes? Any objections to approving the minutes? Here none, the minutes are approved for our last meeting. There are no presentations with prior notice, but there are public hearings. Resolution PG 2023-009 granting a conditional use permit to allow the expansion of an institutional healthcare facility located at 390 Lover's Lane. May I have motion to approve?
Commissioner Murray, so moved to approve the resolution concerning a conditional use permit for Riverside.
Second. Thank you. May we now have the staff report?
The staff report starts on page nine of the printed packet. On February 23rd, Doug Clegg. Doug Clegg, representing Riverside Assisted Living Incorporated, applied for a conditional use permit to allow for the expansion of an existing assisted living institution at 390 Lover's Lane. This is parcel number 06025217. Soldatna Misso Code classifies Riverside Assisted Living as a healthcare institution, which requires a conditional use permit in the commercial district. Our code is 1710265C requires this project go through a process for a conditional use permit subject to the standards of conditional uses. The proposed project is not exempt and is not eligible for an administrative permit, therefore it is before you today. Riverside Assisted Living intends to develop a 3,358 square foot expansion to their institutional healthcare facility. The submitted site plan shows 14 units with each unit containing a bedroom and a bathroom. The existing structure was actually constructed in 1957. It was previously a bar, a restaurant, and a hotel prior to a change of use. This is a 25,000 square foot institutional healthcare facility. It was granted a conditional use permit back in 2012 by Resolution 2012007. In that same year, an administrative parking waiver was granted to reduce the required parking from 24 spaces to 22. So that's just the history of, of this building and some of you may remember that. The project is compatible with surrounding land uses, which include private residences and the adjacent senior living facility. The project is conveniently located near doctor's offices, shopping, dining, and recreation, which goes along to a lot of the conversations we've had as a commission regarding walkable areas for people who may not have access to driving. And that is one of these populations Caitlin mentions time and time again, under eight and over 80. And so that's, you know, that over 80 demographic here. The property is served by city water and sewer and the property is accessed from Lover's Lane and that's a paved street. This property is located in the commercial zoning district. Here's a map of the zoning district. The intent of the commercial district is to provide an area which is convenient, visually pleasing, contributes to the economic welfare of the community, and allows for a wide range of general businesses and other compatible uses. The project contributes to economic welfare of the community by providing a valuable and needed service and by providing local employment. Healthcare institutions for nursing or convalescent homes are permitted conditional uses in the commercial district. The Soldatna Code defines healthcare institutions as an institution or facility, whether public or private principally get engaged in providing services for health maintenance, diagnosis, or treatment of human disease, pain, injury, deformity, or physical condition. The definition for healthcare institution includes nursing homes as an example, and staff has determined that this is the closest definition for the proposed assisted living facility expansion, and therefore it would require the conditional use permit. All of the general standards regarding minimum lot size, lot width, lot coverage, yard setbacks, and maximum building height are met, and that's in that table that you've seen before, right here in the staff report. Our code regulates off-street parking and loading, and so then we dive into that section of code. The intent of this section is to require property owners to provide off-street parking and loading areas in the appropriate number, size, configuration, and level of improvement to meet the needs of individual uses on the property and in the community in a safe and visually pleasing manner. The submitted site plan depicts parking will be on the same lot as the principal structure, which meets our code standards. Off-street parking specifies that for hospitals, nursing homes, or other healthcare institutions, there shall be one parking space per two patients at maximum capacity. So this 14-bedroom addition would require an additional seven parking spaces based on our code standard. In 2012, an administrative waiver was granted to 22 required parking spaces. Therefore, with these additional seven, then creates a total of 29 spaces to be required. So based on aerial imagery in the submitted site plan, staff estimates a total of 40 spaces will actually be provided after the expansion. So our code requirements are met. Three of the parking spaces are about 45 feet from Lover's Lane, and so we had a little bit of a conversation with the architects and our public works director to look at this. Lover's Lane is paved, this is a dead end, it's very low usage because it's at the end of the road. A lot of times we don't allow parking spaces to be so close to the apron of a, of a street, but because this is such a low usage area, Public Works gave their blessing for these spaces to be on the site plan as depicted. So they provide a comment that the spacing was adequate to provide safe and effective parking and vehicular movement without any types of backlog of vehicles. We also require two parking spaces for physically challenged when there are more than 26 spaces and less than 50 spaces. So the submitted site plan depicts four accessible parking spaces and the code is met for that accessibility. Code also requires that all parking and loading areas be designated with appropriate means of vehicular access. So the driveway curb cut from the road is approximately 24 feet in width based on aerial imagery, and that also meets our code. Access aisles in the parking lot are also 24 feet in width, approximately also meeting code requirements. Our code requires that all new parking areas that have curb cut access to and from a paved street be paved. Historically, portions of this plot parking lot were, had predated paving code in that requirement, and they were considered legal, non-conforming. As Lover's Lane is paved, any new require, any new parking areas shall be paved, and the paving of these areas is depicted on the site plan. Our code does not allow for snow storage within required parking areas or landscaped areas. Although the site plan does not depict snow storage, we just state that as a requirement in our conditional permit. Code also requires that proposed parking spaces be not less than 10 feet in width or 20 feet in length for parking spaces, and that's just a standard across the board. However, due to some space limitations on the project site, the applicant requested a waiver to reduce the width of the parking spaces from our 10 feet in code to nine feet. Staff supports the waiver requested as the modification substantially complies with the intent of the parking lot standards. The proposed parking spaces meet these minimum standards. Also, this parking lot far exceeded the minimum requirements. They express that on Sundays and holidays, sometimes parking becomes an issue. So that's kind of that area of grace that we were given. Street wide, right-of-way landscaping is required. This softens the impact of land uses along street rights away, but does not obscure land uses from sight. There is an estimated 87 feet of right-of-way along Lover's Lane. So it's, it's more this portion right here, that's what we're talking about. So in between the driveway and then at the end of Lover's Lane. Currently native vegetation that was retained meets that right-of-way landscaping requirement. Based on the site plan, the building expansion will likely remove the majority of these trees due to the location of the development. That's in figure five, I tried to depict that for you. To meet the, our landscaping code, a total of six trees need to be retained or to be planted within the Lover's Lane right-of-way landscaping bed. The parcel and a portion of the healthcare facility are within the Kenai River overlay district. However, as the expansion is not within that 100 feet from ordinary high watermark, no additional permitting is needed for the K-Rod. And then as, as you've seen, when we've gone through other conditional use permits, I'll go through the eight, eight conditions that need to be met, these are listed in code. So in 1710400, there's eight standards and we will just go through one standard at a time. So the first standard is that the proposed development satisfies specific standards associated with the condition used listed in the code, if there are any. We found that this standard is met. Soldatna Misso Code does not list any specific standards for institutional homes. The second conditional use standard is that the use is in harmony with the comprehensive plan and the surrounding land uses. Staff found that this standard is also met. The subject property began development in 1957. Goal number two in chapter three of Economic Development of the Comprehensive Plan envisioned Soldatna 2030 encourages the reuse and/or redevelopment of key areas, particularly along the river and major highways. And so this area is both along the river and a major highway. The proposed expansion of the current healthcare facility and its improvements continue to revitalize the property from a historic state of vacancy and some deterioration prior to 2012. And again, 2012 is when Riverside Assisted Living began their renovations and acquired their conditional use permit. The generalized future land use map is one tool in the comprehensive plan which provides guidance on the type and intensity of future development within the city. It may be used to guide development in the proposed direction through individual zoning applications as they occur. The future land use map identifies this area as commercial, which is intended to create that concentrated, vibrant, attractive downtown business core. And it's, it's also hopefully to be convenient to pedestrians as well. And so as we talked about earlier, that this is an area that's close to shopping, to doctor's offices, that should provide access for pedestrian movement. Assisted living facilities are typically designed to create a quiet setting for aging seniors and are not intended to create a vibrant atmosphere. Although several, several of the adjacent properties are residential today and are similar in use to the Riverside Assisted Living, this may not be the case in the future. The commercial district allows for a wide range of uses such as bars, restaurants, personal services, recreation facilities. Therefore, future allowable uses may or may not be compatible with the expanded Riverside Assisted Living facility. The surrounding land uses consist of a community residence that is owned by the applicant. There's a two-family dwelling and a single-family dwelling, as well as a vacant building, which was most recently a dog daycare facility and two strip malls. So those strip malls contain various restaurants, personal services, and offices. There's also several vacant lots along this parcel. The proposed project is located at the south end of Lover's Lane, which is a dead-end street with no through traffic. There is approximately 25 feet of Lover's Lane that is not constructed and still heavily vegetated. The two residential dwellings along Lover's Lane provide some landscaping and paving, and the community residence is also mostly paved and has provided landscaping throughout the property. Currently, the proposed development is in harmony with the surrounding land uses and as such, the existing healthcare facility, the community residence, and the residential dwellings. Staff believes that the proposed expansion of the healthcare institution is in harmony with the comprehensive plan as well as the surrounding land uses. So condition number two is met. The third standard is the use meets the general standards of the zoning code and the intent of the zoning district, which is to be located. So the intent of the commercial zoning district is to provide an area which is convenient, visually pleasing, contributes to the economic welfare of the community, and allows for a wide range of general businesses and other compatible uses. The proposed expansion will continue to revitalize the once deteriorated property, and it will also provide additional jobs and an increase in the number of residents that will utilize other services on the peninsula. Therefore, contributing to the economic welfare of Soldatna and surrounding areas. Standard number four is the use shall be so located and arranged on the site to avoid significant noise, glare, odor, or other nuisances and dangers. Staff found that this standard is also met. We're not aware of any noise, glare, or odor that would be generated by the expansion of the facility outside of construction. Staff had requested from Larson Engineering additional information regarding the distance from the building to the property line to ensure that the landscaping bed would not have an encroachment. Larson reported that this distance is 30 feet, and so that standard also will not cause any additional nuisances or dangers, and that's actually more pertinent to fire code and the building code. Condition number five is the proposed development shall not significantly impair the value of the adjoining property. We found that this standard is also met. The proposed expansion of use is similar to the neighboring residential uses, and staff is not aware of any evidence that would suggest that an expansion of the assisted living home would impair adjoining property values. And then condition number six. The size and scale of the use is such that shall be adequately served by existing public services and facilities. We found the standards met. This property is served by city water and sewer. The proposed expansion would require additional public services, but this property is located in central emergency services response area and is served by the Soldatna Police Department, which are all close by. An updated site plan that depicts a sidewalk improvements may, that may occur within the right-of-way will be required. All improvements within the right-of-way must gain approval from the Director of Public Works and shall be in accordance with Soldatna Misso Code. So that pertains to, I'll pull this up real quick. There, in the site plan, it, it kind of zigzags a little bit and has a sidewalk that meets up around here. And so that is considered within right-of-way a sidewalk improvement. But we just need to put that in there as a clause. And then is condition seven, granting of the conditional use shall not be harmful to public safety, health, or welfare. Staff found that the standards met. We do not believe that granting this permit will be harmful to public safety. And then the last is that the property is, does not owe anything to the city, like property taxes, sales tax, things like that. And the standard is met. The finance department reported that there are no outstanding obligations to the city. So with that, I'll just go over the eight conditions that staff recommends be put on this conditional use permit. Again, that's not to say that if you have anything else that could be deleted or added to, you know, after the staff report, that's the time to, to talk about amendments. So the first condition is construction and maintenance to be in accordance with the site plan dated November 19th, 2021. The second is snow storage shall be outside of any required right-of-way landscaping beds or parking areas. The third is parking spaces shall measure 20 feet in length by nine feet in width. The two-way drive lot aisles be, shall be 24 feet in width. Parking lot paving of newly constructed parking spaces and drive aisles is required. Six trees meeting Soldatna standards are required within the Lover's Lane right-of-way landscaping bed. Submission of a sign permit for any signage. That all required landscaping shall be installed prior to the issuance of the final certificate of occupancy. And all improvements within the right-of-way are required to apply for approval by the Director of Public Works. All improvements shall be in accordance with our code. So to end, staff has reviewed the application materials and determined that the project meets the general standards for development of a healthcare institution, nursing or convalescent home in the commercial district, and recommends approval of the site plan and conditional use permit. Thank you. And then I think Caitlin back. Caitlin dropped from our call. Charlene, do you want to step in? Well. When she comes back.
Sure, okay. We'll share, that's okay.
The public comment period is now open. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on this item?
Please state your name and your city in the.
This is Caitlin. For some reason I couldn't, you couldn't hear me before.
Oh, thanks Caitlin for chiming in. All relief, Charlene over duties. All right, please proceed.
Chief Operations Officer for Aspen Creek. This is our project. The reason we're doing this is, I'm sure you guys are aware of what's happening with just the general population in Alaska. We are, we're getting older. Our population is aging. This is one of the, the reason we're expanding this property is really to better meet the needs of our population. And I will tell you, we're, we're barely holding a candle to it because we know in the peninsula that we have about 1,100 seniors, people over the age of 65, and they're going to be going through this process where they'll be through a facility like this. So we, we wanted to expand this and still do it within the guidelines of the city, but this is a project we feel that we must do. And the other thing that we try to do here in Alaska at Aspen Creek is we're really trying to build the standard of senior care and set the bar for everybody across the state. This is our third, we have three facilities in Alaska, and we just took over the operations of this facility from Riverside this past year. And we're really trying to set that bar. So this remodel, the expansion, all this is really trying to just build a better lifestyle for these seniors who are aging and at the end of their life. We have a little contingency of folks here with me that can answer any questions that you guys may have around the project if you have them. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wish to speak on this item? With no one else wishing to speak, the public comment period is closed. Oh, there is. If there are no other folks wishing to speak on the item, we, are there any commission comments or questions for staff?
Sorry Caitlin, we, we do have somebody, I think the microphone just wasn't on so you can hear.
Thank you. My name is Renee Bryant, and I'm the Executive Director for Aspen Creek Riverside. And I just wanted an opportunity to speak to you all and let you know that right now today, we have 37 people on our waitlist because we don't have enough rooms for, to meet the demands. And also, as I listened to the conversation about the conditional use permit, I hope that you really do take into account what a perfect location for our seniors. Because, and, and just to compare and contrast a little bit, I'm also the Director of the Aspen Creek in Kenai. And where our folks are here in Soldatna is so wonderful because they can get out and go to Wednesday Market. They can go to a doctor's appointment with a $5 cab ride or to a shopping center for, you know, just a few dollars in a cab. My folks in Kenai, I had a lady today that came to the hospital, $86 cab ride. So it is so much harder for them. And so I just really wanted you all to know what a perfect location this really was for our seniors to be able to have as normal a life and to still get to participate in some of those things that we all enjoy doing. And I just felt like it was really important to tell you that and to make you know, you know, just make you understand that this is a perfect spot for those folks. That's all I really had.
Thank you so much. All right, I don't want to cut off anyone else. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
I don't believe so Caitlin.
Thanks. Are there any commissioner comments or questions for staff?
Madam Chair, just a friendly amendment. I don't think I mentioned the resolution number. It's 2023-009. Please add that to, to the, to the motion.
Thank you.
I had one question. Um, when talking about the three parking spaces that are within forty-five feet of Lover's Lane. Um, I'm wondering if they're already have enough parking spaces, if they can do without those three.
Staff had proposed that. I think the idea is that they are short on parking, especially on Sundays and holidays, that um, during the week perhaps parking, you know, for staff and parking for families that come to visit is adequate. But it seems that there are a lot of loved ones who want to visit and who drive. And so they find themselves, it can get tight at times of the day. And I don't know if there's anyone here who wants to speak more to that. But that was the reason of keeping those spaces is to develop just more parking spaces and overflow.
But the button this is. Okay, so that little parking, the three parking spaces that you're talking about. So we have some seniors that go out with their families and will be on that end where that's their their suites are going to be on that end. So if they're able to pull into that parking spot, unload in their wheelchair and go in that access point right there at the end, that would be more convenient than having to go to the front, then go all the way back down.
Okay, so all three of those are accessible, handicap accessible parking spaces? They don't look like they are, that's why.
They're not handicap accessible parking spaces, but they are connected to that sidewalk that could go into there, or even the ones that aren't in wheelchairs that are hard to walk.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, my concern with those three spots is just the future development, which you've mentioned that Lover's Lane is not completed, and we know the future development that's soon coming. Would that be a potential problem later on? If there, if it's encroaching on future development, I guess was my only concern.
The issue isn't that it's encroaching. The idea is that if you were to have a development down here, that there's a lot more through traffic than a normal street, this this would cause an issue because as you can picture, a car is pulling out from, I don't know if it's my cursor at all, but a a car would be pulling out from those spaces and then they're backing up while another car is trying to enter in. It creates a backlog. And then one or two cars is fine, but sometimes on busier streets you might experience, for example, Dr. Sheridan's office is one example in our city where this is not ideal, where there is a lot of congestion at times because of the it's called a queuing distance, the queuing distance isn't great enough um, for the traffic. Right now, as it stands, there's, that's fine. It is what, um, it there's, we don't anticipate an issue. But like you said Jenny, I think with further development, it could be a consideration. But again, there's not too much development, you know, beyond, because Riverside does own half of this cul-de-sac at the end here.
Okay. We're treating, we're treating Lover's Lane as a low density. Um, and so we're treating it differently right now because it's low density. But I just don't want to lock us into something in the future when it's not low density. Because it's um, probably about to be different. So that was, that's my concern with that. I didn't know if since they don't, aren't required to have those parking spaces if those are necessary to this. That was my only comment. That was. Oh, go ahead.
Sorry, um, I know this is uh, clunky. Thanks for bearing with me. My question was in a similar vein. Um, I think that our our vision for Latin twenty twenty-three plan talks about trying to um, turn some of these streets like Lover's Lane into streets that have on-street parking, especially if this will become a downtown corridor and um, become even more walkable and and wheelchairable um, for everyone, including residents of Riverside. And so I'm just, um, the maps and the property lines and the setbacks for the right of ways were giving me some pause. I just didn't know if the, if the um, expansion itself looked like it went right up to the um, the edge of the right of way. And then so those parking spaces looked like they were into the right of way. So I wanted to make sure that um, just a clarification that neither the the expansion of the building or those three parking spots over there um, are in the right of way. Uh, that's a question for staff.
Yeah, okay, so this is not in your staff report. This is um, what I did. I sometimes I'll superimpose what is given to me over imagery, so this isn't perfect. And part of that is with property lines, they're not exact. Sometimes there's a variation of five feet, sometimes it can be as great as ten feet. The idea is that we live on a three-dimensional globe, so a three-D surface, our coordinates are three-D, and you're taking two-D imagery and you're stretching it. And because of that, there's distortion, and that's why our property lines that you see here are off typically. But to, these are, this is close. Um, and so that was why some of these concerns were brought up for the architects. Um, when I overlaid this imagery, this red is the proposed expansion. There is, based on our, our property lines, it, there's um, there's room. And the commercial district doesn't have the setbacks. However, you can also see that this is likely off, not in the favor of Riverside. It's probably off on the other side. So, and that is, you can see from Lover's Lane how this property line on goes right up to the edge of the pavement, whereas typically our right of way extends a couple of feet off of the pavement, and that's to account for sidewalks and utility placements and things like that. Um, but we did ask the architects for this distance, and it wasn't necessarily a distance to the property line. It was the distance to the travelway, and that's important for, or actually, no, sorry, I take that back. We asked for the distance from the property line to the corner of the building, and that's a fire code issue. And that was, I think, twenty-eight feet. So the, that is met, so there's twenty-eight feet in between this very edge corner of the expansion to the property line. And then for the travelway, I believe that was thirty feet right here. So um, again, this is just kind of a visualization of cars coming in and then having that queuing distance right here of cars waiting to pull in while one car is kind of pulling out right here and and backing up and then going forward. Does that help explain anything?
Yes. Um, I'm still, like Jenny mentioned, um, I'm wondering if there is an alternate solution so that there can be adequate parking and um, we can avoid that. We could have a safe queuing distance for folks coming in and out and driving around. It, it seems like the hope for the perhaps near future is to have um, more streets going through that down, future downtown area, and I would hate for any future accidents to be falling on our shoulders um, because we didn't plan for it.
And you know, as you've seen in the past, and your body has, has done, is that you have put conditions on, you you've made amendments to what I wrote as your resolution. And so that you guys can talk more and think about that if you wanted to go through that. You can also postpone this, and we can have more discussion on that internally.
I would move that we could postpone, um, so that we'd have a better conversation with um, the folks who are planning the riverfront redevelopment. Uh, just to make sure that we're not going to be um, causing problems down the road. And I.
I agree. You can.
Yeah.
Is that a move in a second? Does that count Jen?
We're going to have one of the representatives from the Riverside Assisted to chat real quick.
Hi, my name is Brent Lane, and I am the general contractor that's going to be doing the expansion. One of the things I was just looking at as I was listening to your guys' concern is we have plenty of room, and I don't know which which way it is toward the the entrance to the building, if that's north, south, east, or west, I'm a little lost up here. But if we take those three spots and move them towards the island and the center of the building, we could easily achieve the distance that you need without any problem at all. There's all kinds of room there to do that. And we would love to not postpone it. I just flew up from Idaho for this, so I would love to not have to come back again. But if that's the only issue that we're concerned with, that would not be a difficult change for us to do.
That's great to hear.
Well, how far are we moving it? We should probably be specific. How far do you want to move it? That would be my question. If you want twenty feet, let's get you twenty. If you need ten, let's give you ten. I mean, we have the space there to do that, uh, however much to be able to alleviate that concern that you have of congestion.
I have a question. Um, is there no sidewalk on Lover's Lane? Because that will eventually be developed as well.
One side there is right here. You can.
Oh, okay, that is, uh, okay.
It's not our standard.
It looks, okay, it's very little. It looks like a curb or something, okay. So if we had what we would like, which would probably be like a six-foot, especially would be desirable for, for your tenants, I would think, I don't know if we're going to get six-foot ones, but we're pulling for that, right, eventually. Um, minimum is four, I believe, right now. So then what, what is, do you know, Jen, the standard, um, so that there's not, so there is room for queuing? Because we're trying to make exception to not have enough queuing. So we want to make sure that if they're willing to move it, we move it far enough.
And so that all depends on the traffic density. Right now Lover's Lane is so low density. That's why it was clear the state does have standards for, you know, whether it's a, so there's different types of roads. There's, there's um, main collectors, arterial collectors, and then our, our side roads. And so this is not considered a main collector, it's not even considered an arterial collector. It's so low traffic that you, that's why it's on, it's almost like negligible, that's on the lowest end. So uh, I, if you're talking about change, it's hard to predict what that change would be as far as traffic counts go on the road, and then to put it in a different standard than what it has now.
And what, what is the uh, distance right now?
Let me pull that up, so sorry.
So we can come up with a number that works.
Just looking at it to the way it stands right now, if we just took that and duplicated it on the other side, we'd gain twenty-seven feet. Um, and that would probably give you more than enough room for where you're already at right now.
I like it because if you just look at those, you know, if someone's turning on your road there, I don't know if it has a road name, or if it's just into your parking lot. And someone else is backing up, you can just see that it's, you know, like she said, it's low density right now, but if it starts to get busier, it's going to be difficult. So if you have the twenty-seven feet, I would say let's go for that.
We definitely could do that, no problems.
You have the wording for us to make.
Yeah.
She helps us.
Let me pull, well, do you want me to first find, find the what currently exists, or do you want to just put into?
Madam Chair, I just moved to amend the conditions to um, add a ninth condition that the proposed three-person parking lot nearest the road be moved twenty-seven feet into the property.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Right, you're going to have to help me type this up.
I think that more than adequately alleviates any future concerns. And then perhaps, you know, if there's another, if there's room for another remodel in the future, perhaps by that time there will be on-street parking on Burt Street. Not on Burt Street, I'm sorry, on Lover's Lane.
All right, Dennis, do you want to edit what I just wrote if it doesn't reflect what you said?
I can't read it.
Oh, sorry, let me, let me read it. Sorry. The proposed three parking spaces be moved to twenty seat, twenty-seven feet from the travelway? Is there anything else to add to that?
Is it east? I think we're moving them east.
All right. You, we have the motion, so I'll um, vote for the motion to amend. So this isn't voting on the resolution, it's just voting to amend the resolution. And then you'll be voting to adopt the amended resolution, if that makes sense. Okay. So vote to amend PZ Resolution twenty twenty-three oh oh nine for the ninth conditional um, per, or night condition of approval to state that proposed three parking spaces be moved east to twenty-seven feet from the travelway. I'll call for the vote. Murray?
Yes.
Topfest?
Yes.
Smithwick Ailey?
Yes.
Anderson and Burton are absent. Barbaza?
Yes.
And Chair Badla?
Yeah.
Motion to amend passes. All right, and then is there any other comments from the commission?
The only other comment I had was on landscaping, um, and to, uh, it wasn't clear to me whether or not those, it looked like the trees might need to come down, but if they don't, can we state that in our um, our conditions? Um, that six trees, um, well, I suppose, as it state, as it's currently stated, it's, they can either be existing trees or or new trees. So. It's so much easier to leave them um, than than to plant them. And I know that we've had a little bit of trouble with some of our trees and some other right of ways, so I didn't want to make it any more onerous on on um, this remodel than it needs to be. I think if there are no further comments or questions from commissioners to staff or a discussion amongst commissioners, we can call for the vote.
So the call for the vote of the Resolution twenty twenty-three oh oh nine as amended. Topfest?
Yes.
Smithwick Ailey?
Yes.
Barbaza?
Yes.
Murray?
Yes.
Anderson and Burton are um, absent, and then Chair Badla.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thanks, everybody, for um, problem solving and coming up with a good solution. Now we can um, move on to um, resolution, sorry. Getting my bearings. To new business. Uh, Resolution PZ twenty twenty-three dash zero zero eight, recommending approval of the Soldatna Junction subdivision twenty twenty-three replat. May I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve uh, Resolution number PZ twenty twenty-three dash zero zero eight.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second, Commissioner Murray.
Thank you. May we have the staff report?
A link to the staff report can be found on page twenty-nine of the printed packet. On February seventeenth, McLean Consulting submitted a preliminary plat for the, to the city for the combination of three lots into two lots. Caitlin, I think I forgot to share my screen, I'm sorry. Caitlin, can you see my screen?
You know, um, I'm just going along through the packet by myself, so don't worry about me. Um, I can, I see it all. Thank you.
Okay, sorry about that. Um, McLean Consulting represents the owner of record, Dolly Farnsworth, who is represented by Nora Farnsworth. The preliminary plat is for parcel number oh six oh one nine oh oh six, known as Lot twenty-three. Lot twenty-three has an area of point two-two acres. This lot would be combined with a portion of parcel number oh six oh one nine oh. Lot 23 has an area of point 22 acres. This lot would be combined with a portion of parcel number 06019007, which is Lot 22. Then the remainder of Lot 22 is to be combined with Lot 21, which is parcel number 06019008. The preliminary plat combination would result in Lot 21A, which would have an area of point 333 acres And Lot 23A, which would also have an area of point 333 acres. And I'll pull up the preliminary. The zoning of the three lots is commercial. The land to the north is vacant and zone commercial. The lands to the south and west are zone commercial as well. And they're developed with an automotive, automobile service station and a medical office, as well as an eating establishment. Land to the east is zoned institutional and it is a church. The minimum lot size, maximum building height, the minimum lot width and the minimum yard standards of 17, 10, 265 Are met for the commercial district in regards to 21A and 23A, mostly because they are vacant. And there's Very lax standards in the commercial district. Legal access is from South Soldatna Avenue. Municipal water and sewer are both available. The applicant, The application was forwarded to our public works, our streets and maintenance for their comments. No comments were received from our staff. As well as 29 notices were mailed on February 24th with no comments being received to the city from the public. The preliminary plat for Soldatna Junction subdivision 2023 replat meets the standards of our code. And Resolution PZ 2023 008 has been provided for your use and recommends approval to the Kenai Pen Slaborough. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the public comment period is now open. Is there any member of the public who wishes to speak on this item? Um, if anyone is on Zoom, raise your hand if you'd like to, to comment. Um, and you can also do star nine. I think I'm the only one in Zoom land.
You are.
No one else is here.
Thanks. Um, all right. Um, With no one else wishing to speak, the comment period is now closed. Are there any commission comments, uh, or questions for staff?
Call for the question.
Caitlin, I, I don't think anyone has any comments or questions at the time.
Okay. Thank you. Man, you guys are putting up with a lot of, uh, thanks. Here. All right. With no one else wishing to comment, let's call for the vote.
All right. The vote for Resolution 2023 008 recommending approval of the Soldatna Junction subdivision 2023 replat. Barbaza? Murray?
Yes.
Topfest?
Yes.
Smithwick Ailey?
Yes.
Anderson and Burton are both absent and Chair Baba?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. There are no informational items and I believe that we are, um, moving on to Commissioner comments. Um, and report, let's see. Wait, wait, wait.
I need to be excused for the rest of the meeting. I have another commitment.
Okay. Thank you. You are so excused. And I apologize for not being present in the chamber today. Um, is, uh, is there a council member With us who could give a report?
Uh, to Chair Baba, uh, this is Jordan Schultz and I am present and be happy to give a brief report to the commission on council ongoings.
Thank you.
Um, so following the March 8th joint work session that our city council held with the P and Z commission on the new commercial core zoning. Um, we did have a, a meeting that evening and had a couple of things on the agenda. We did have the two big ones for that night, three big ones would be, um, dealing with the park. We had Uh, two, one resolution, one of which was, uh, ordinance specific to the issuance of permitting in the parks and then a citywide ludeness ordinance. Um, the one ordinance specific to the park and the resolution that accompanied that were, uh, failed by the council. And then the ludeness one was postponed to the following meeting. Uh, we also passed a resolution which would be authorizing the execution of a contract for $304,000 Uh, for the construction of downtown parking improvements. I believe this is one near the Aspen Hotel. Um, to address parking needs in the downtown area and specifically with the park during the peak summer hours. Um, oh, and the other really good news that came to that meeting is we finally have finalized our, um, Employment contract for the new city manager, Jeanette Bauer, and that's all done. Bo's on that and we'll have a new manager here starting in the near future. At our March 22nd meeting, uh, we did appropriate, uh, $15 million in bond revenue for the field house through, uh, ordinance 2023 008. Uh, so that project could hopefully start, um, construction here in the near future. There's still a lot of things up in the air with that that have to be finalized. But I've been told that best case scenario, if everything goes right, stars align, we could potentially be breaking ground on that later this summer fall. There's also an appropriation for 1.2 million dollars in loan revenue that we're getting from the Alaska Clean Water Fund. Uh, this is a state administered program with, um, Where they essentially subsidize the interest on that loan and it's going to be used to fund much-needed improvements at the wastewater plant. Um, later that, that meeting, we did pass a couple of resolutions authorizing execution of contracts for both design services and dewater and equipment at the facility, which are really needed. Um, so it's exciting to see that moving forward, even though it might not always be the most exciting thing for the community. It's definitely needed. Um, we also, um, had the previously tabled ludeness ordinance come forward, as I'm sure you've heard the news, um, and that was also failed. I'd be happy to ask, answer any questions on that, but that might postpone our meeting significantly. We did, um, also authorize the city manager to submit an application to the Alaska Department of Transportation Um, for grant funding for the Marydale Rehabilitation Project. So that's a new grant that I don't believe we've, uh, Pursued in the past, but there's a really great opportunity there to potentially cover, um, a, a large portion or entirety of that rehabilitation of Marydale Avenue. That's all I have and I'd be happy to stand for any questions.
Thank you, Jordan.
Okay. Thank you.
Unless anyone has any questions, um, I think we can, um, head over to, to Jen. Do you have an associate planner report for us?
I do. I would love to invite you all to April 19th. So it's coming up in about two weeks. We have our second Riverfront Redevelopment Open House. Um, it's at 6:30 at the Sports Center. So April 19th, 6:30, Sports Center. Hope that you guys can come and review. Um, there are some pretty interesting design concepts that our, Our consultants have created and we're excited to hear your feedback and get your take on, on that. There are results from some of the survey questions that are interesting. Laura Reiner, um, compiled them and put them in a really nice digestible format too. And that's on the website for the Riverfronts and that's www.soldatnaviverfront.org if you wanted to look at the, the results from that. We are underway to with two other projects that are all kind of happening at the same time. One is the Arts and Culture Master Plan for the city. Um, so Been meeting with our, a core group and it's a really interesting group, an eclectic group of local artists and, And musicians and, um, art teachers from the college and so high and, and trying to figure out, you know, What, how to create this plan and what it looks like and how it'll shape. The second thing is complete streets. And so complete streets is, um, something that John had mentioned, uh, maybe a couple of meetings ago, but we were awarded a grant. Um, and so what happens is that a federal agency comes in with our DOT and the city and we are all in partnership to do a demonstration project. And we're looking at a couple of sites, um, to, to do something that will make, make this street what's complete, which is considered more pedestrian friendly. Um, and they have ideas of what's worked in the past and examples from other areas of the country. So we're excited for those projects. And that is, oh, and then we had, uh, two code violations that we are, um, pursuing and that's a mandatory report for me to talk to you about. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, and I think maybe I'll just ask, uh, Jenny to start and then go down the row and then, um, for commissioner comments.
Um, yeah, this is Jenny. Do, do we get to vote for which street we want completed? How about Lover's Lane and South Cobuck?
Um, I will, I will put, so for Lover's Lane, South Cobuck, um, what, what's your take? What's your take on why that one?
Uh, yeah. Well, it would, I think it would be Beautiful to the city and for the area there by the river.
That actually wasn't one on our Considerations.
Okay.
So, I know, but.
It's, it's on my radar all the time. So.
Well, it does have that nice utility box there. So I understand.
Uh, yeah. So I would, are you talking about the Sterling Highway then or into, because I was thinking other.
It has to be a DOT.
Okay.
A DOT street. So, um, whether it's the Sterling, the Spur, K Beach, Funny River. Um, those have been, it has to be something on that. And so looking at intersections or a travelway within that area.
Okay.
But it's not to say that your ideas of internal aren't valuable at some.
When the city is ready to do a complete street then.
All right.
I don't have a comment. Thanks.
I have no comment.
And that's it. Caitlin?
Hey, thanks so much for bearing with me. I, um, Zoom looked like it was working swimmingly and then, um, And then it just dropped. So this is even more awkward than Zoom to do this by telephone and I appreciate everyone's patience. Um, um, baby is three months old exactly today and I think that by, um, The next meeting I can be a person again. It's been, it's been a little bit, you know, newborn. Uh, So thank you for your patience and, um, thanks Jen for holding down all the fronts today. Um, and I look forward to seeing everyone Next month. With that, uh, the meeting is adjourned and we will see everybody on May 3rd, um, at 5:30 in city council chambers.